Welcome, everybody, to our February 13th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. May I please have a motion to call the meeting to order? So moved Linda, second. Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
And may I please have a motion to move into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person or corporation, discussing a student discipline matter, and proposed litigation. So moved Shanna, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll be back in an hour.
Thank you.
So moved Carol, second. Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then moves us back into the public session, so please, everyone stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
All right, and with that, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add a vote to uphold a disciplinary matter. So moved Carol, second. Linda, all in favor? Aye. And may I please have a motion and a vote to uphold and approve the disciplinary matter as stated by President, Superintendent Neenan, you know. So moved, second. All in favor? Aye. Any nays? No. One abstention?
Abstain.
Abstain. So that should be four. It's nothing. Okay. And then now we're good to move on to our liaison reports.
All right. We've got a whole crew tonight.
We do. Got all four of them. All right. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think we're doing that. That's a new tradition. We might have just started right there.
Oh, yeah. I think that's how it's gonna go down every time.
That was fantastic.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Black History and Culture Month. As we celebrate, I'd like to remind everyone of all of the different events happening at Thomas. The first one being our annual Black History Month bingo, and on each day on the morning announcements, a figure will be recognized for their accomplishments and the historical events that took place because of them. Next, the Dream Club in partnership with the BBSU will be hosting our annual Poetry Night and Black Art Night. There will be performances by jazz band, vocalist, and as well as live painting, monologues, and more. The event will be happening Thursday, February 29th, at 6:30 PM. On February 5th, the BBSU hosted our monthly meeting talking about black culture and everything it includes. From fashion, food, to cinema and literature, students and club members got the opportunity to learn more about its history and enjoyed every minute of it. At Thomas, we hope that you would embark on our celebrations this month. Planning for this year's senior trip to Camp Corry is underway. The date of the mandatory senior trip parent/student meeting has been changed. The meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 28th, also at 6:30 PM, in the Thomas Auditorium.
Hi. Okay, so Student Council this year, we planned our Valentine's Day event differently this year, so we decided to partner up with NHS, and we made over 400 Valentines for the elementary students. And tomorrow, a group of us will be delivering them, and we're really excited to see them. We're gonna go on the morning show. On another Valentine's Day note, the Link Crew has started hanging up Valentines for our freshman groups on their lockers to, like, keep them motivated for completing their first semester of high school. They're really cute, I've seen some of them, and I found all of my lockers, so I was very happy. For sophomores, the pre-ACT is coming up on March 9th, so people need to get their, like, admissions in. And another exam that is coming up for grades 10 through 12 is the ASVAB exam to help students align their skills and interests for after-high school. March 18th is the SUNY Geneseo Trip for juniors to take a tour of the campus, and they're going to have, like, a presentation and lunch, and spots are filling up fast. And then last thing for juniors is that there's a scholarship packet for colleges around the area that you can apply for, so I have to get that in. And lastly, from me, Webster Thomas Math League has concluded its mathematical season, and our A-team had a perfect score, so good job on the athletes. Now on to sports, from Lauren.
All right, so with cheer, the Titans competed at the Monroe County Championships, and the team's performance was outstanding and earned them third place. With indoor track, the Titans will be completing, will be competing in the Monroe County Championship Saturday at Nazareth College. And then with bowling, the Titan bowlers held their senior night Monday, and then both the boys' and girls' team won their match 5-0. Congratulations, guys. With Nordic Ski, the Lakers will be competing in Sectionals next Monday at Bristol Mountain. And then with Alpine Ski, the Lakers will be competing Friday in a divisional race at Bristol Mountain.
All right, we have a few more sports. So, boys' basketball, the Thomas Titans' boys' basketball team got a hard-fought win over Brighton on Wednesday night on the road. For girls' basketball, the Titans sadly lost 53-30 to a great Penfield team Tuesday evening. It was a tough game, but a good one. Wrestling, the Titans wrestled last Saturday in the first round of Sectionals. Titans finished in their third Class A, won, and in all, 11 wrestlers will be competing at SUNY Brockport this Saturday in the Supersessional. For boys' swimming, the Lakers swam in a Class A sectional prelims at the WAC Tuesday evening, and the team finished seventh overall. For boys' hockey, the Titans traveled to Brockport Tuesday, Brockport on Tuesday to take on Portside. The Titans tied Portside in overtime 3-3. And then the Titans host Hilton Saturday at 2 PM at the Webster Ice Arena, so head on out. And that's all from Thomas. Thanks, guys.
Nice job.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm glad to be back after my illness. And of course, and of course, I'm here with Tristan, and as you know, we have come to share the good news of what's happening at Schrader.
So pardon our informality concerning our attire. We've just come directly from Schrader, helping Student Council out with their Buy a Crush for Your Crush fundraiser, which will be delivering the Crushes tomorrow. We're running that in conjunction with the National Art Honor Society. They're making, I believe it's paper flowers to go as well, and a couple students are gonna be receiving over 46 cans of Crush, so it's gonna be a fun day tomorrow.
Our mastermind team will be taking on staff in a fun tournament this Tuesday, February 27th. So far, the faculty team included a smarticus and much ain't know about nothing.
Woman in STEM had medical professionals come to their meeting yesterday to teach the students how to properly tie a knot, how to secure a wound with staples, and how to properly sew a stitch. They even provided them with proper operating room protective clothing and had them put them on properly.
AP Physics students also raised $342, along with dog and cat food litter boxes, laundry detergent, and dog bones, and puzzle feeders, cat scratchers. Their generosity was outstanding.
And other news, just today, Schroeder was treated to Grammy-nominated and award-winning saxophonist Jimmy Highsmith Jr., who brought smooth jazz sounds to the library. He even played Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo-doo, to the UPTA kids.
Speaking of jazz, everyone should clear their schedules for March 6th, as we're excited to announce the Blues Brothers.
Mr. Ugly, Miss Heck.
Coming back, coming back, March 6th, to perform with the Schrader Jazz Band.
Oh. And on to the musicals. So Catch Me If You Can was a huge success. I had the pleasure of going with a few friends of mine. We had a blast seeing the set that used every single inch of the stage and had a plane that hung from the ceiling, the entire width of the stage. They made, really made it feel like you were flying with Pan Am. Schrader was able to get about four professional musicians in to play in the pit, as well as about four students. It was pretty great, and the theater team is also working with a program called NYC Bound, where 40 theater students from the area will be selected in conjunction with the Rochester-Broadway Theater League to be sent to New York City to help compete for top theater people.
The class of 2024 has hosted the first senior lock-in in over 10 years, last January 25th, with over 200 students in attendance and 15 faculty members who braved the night to play games, music, and of course, laser tag. Contrary to popular opinion, we didn't break anything. And we found out the new library had the perfect late-night karaoke stage, where many students showed off their amazing musical talents. The night ended with a comedy show done by yours truly, with the help from AI. The comedy show was such a success, only two people told me I should never do comedy again.
All righty, as I'm sure you may know, the implementation of the EPAS system has been hard and filled with controversy. However, now that we are sitting at Week 3 with implementation of the EPAS system, students and teachers have had the ability to acclimate themselves to the EPAS system, and we're finding it much, much easier to be able to track student movement in the name of hallway safety.
Black History Month's Door Contest. The Black and Brown Student Union held a door decorating contest for Black History Month. About 30 doors were decorated by various Schrader clubs and organizations. The voting is taking place as we speak.
All righty, this last month has been an absolute blast, and despite the grind of making it to February break just three more days, we are very excited to see things develop as the year rolls along with momentum. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Thank you, guys, very much.
All right, I think we can move on to campus news?
We can. Joni's not here tonight.
Joni's not here tonight, yeah. And Catch Me If You Can and Finding Nemo, we're both fantastic. If anybody's seen those, I know it. Fun. All right, I want to start my report out tonight with reminders for families of our youngest students. Tomorrow, February 14th, that's Valentine's Day, the online lottery application for our pre-kindergarten program will open and remain open until March 14th. So families of four-year-olds not eligible for kindergarten may fill out a lottery application by visiting our website, websterschools.org/registration. Just click on the pre-kindergarten box for more information. Also, a reminder that kindergarten registration for next school year, the 24-25 school year, it's hard to say that, 24-25, holy cow. Families, you can register your child online also by visiting websterschools.org/registration. So again, for our pre-K and our kindergarten-eligible students. Next, I would love to invite up some special guests. We have Mrs. Rebecca Safe, Mrs. Martha End, and I believe Mr. Mark Balfour are gonna come up and give us some news here. You want to come on up and have a seat? Is it just you, Mark, or is it all three of you? Oh, all right, then, if you could bring one more chair, all three of you come on up, join. That'd be great. Thank you. Thanks, Alyssa. And thanks, Kat, for being here. I don't think we have the nameplate for you, just saying that, but great. And we'll go right down the row like we usually do. We'll start with Martha, and I believe Paul.
Becky and I usually present together, so she knows what to say.
Oh, wow, this is gonna be exciting. All right.
Every year. I mean, it's the second year, but every year. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. So I'm here to present elementary campus news. I'm Martha End, the principal at Clem South, and I have some news from all of our wonderful schools. And so we were charged to focus in on our first board goal, and so I honed in on a little narrow part of it, but the piece around how we educate the whole child and helping our students achieve academic success. So I asked our colleagues to answer the question of how do you educate the whole child within your school? So I'll share some of that with you tonight. So we'll start at Clem North. So at Clem North, they are taking on various leadership opportunities throughout the school. So this picture here is of some students who do kind of an informal reading buddies. So they do this in the morning as they're coming in throughout the day, so older students reading with younger students. And here are some kids that, I love this, they call it the tech wizards. So they have some older students helping younger students with technology skills, and then just various leadership roles throughout the building. So it might be returning library books or organizing important events within the school. So State Road has had a really strong initiative to involve families more. So they have had three real focus areas, but up here, you'll see this is an example of one of them, which is a bi-weekly update that they provide families, looking for more family involvement within the school. One thing that I think that they're doing that's really cool is they are seeking more parent involvement on their committees. So they're even looking at 50-50s, 50% parent representation and teacher representation on some of their committees, like MTSS and DEI. All right, so at Plank South, these beautiful children are part of the Student Council. So Student Council is 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade classrooms at Plank South, and they gather feedback from their pre-K through 2 buddies, and they also help promote and support the initiatives by their leadership teams. If you've ever been to Plank North, they're notoriously known for their school-wide assemblies. So they have ongoing school-wide assemblies. I love this picture of their whole school community, and they do various topics within their school-wide assemblies, but a lot of focus on care, which we all know what care is, and I just think that this is a great way that they showcase their, how they build community and family at Plank North. Here at Schlegel, the example that I have for you is around data. So, you know, we love educating the whole child, and we also like looking at data, it's part of it. So all of our schools are engaged in a data review process post our benchmarking, so they've been focusing in over there on looking at that data. They didn't share any pictures with me, so you gotta Google image there for the slideshow. And last but not least are some photos here from Clem South, where I work. The first is our 100-day celebration, so it's not an elementary school without 100 days celebration. We like to say we're 100 days smarter, so kids celebrated that on Friday. And the bottom picture is our beloved Super Bowl event, so this is an event that has happened at Clem South, I don't know, for a very long time. But what was different this year is we put grade levels in charge of events that we always do, and so 3rd grade was in charge of running this event, and so this is our 3rd graders. And we collected tons and tons of food for a local church. And that is all I have for this evening, and it's like this last quote, and, you know, the heart for Valentine's Day. But we take our job of educating the whole child very seriously at the elementary level and just making sure that we're meeting all of their needs, so thank you for letting me share tonight.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Just gonna share some updates also centered around board goal number one about academic program and student achievement. I'm going to start out with goal, that's my program. We started off our school year with our motto that's up there, where we know everybody by name, strength, and story. And we really found out what their strengths were during Regents Week. Our 10th and 11th grade students took Regents exams. Our 11th grade ELA students, 89% passed the LA Regents in January, with many of them, I think the number was six, at mastery, which is 85 or above. And so that's a lot of credit to Dave Clair and those 11th graders and their hard work, so they did a great job. Our 10th graders, both, they took both the Living Environment and the Global, and there was a 92% passing rate in the Living Environment, which you have to look at that and say, they did 1,200 minutes of lab time. They had to commit to that in order to get to that in January, and they did a great job. And then 83% passed the notoriously difficult Global History exam in January, and it was no joke. That was, that's tough. The amount of writing and the amount of comprehension that they have to be able to, that, those skills that they put on display, quite a big deal. So that obviously goes to show the hard work that our kids are doing, but we also wanted to focus in on the whole child. So have some pictures here of our participation in some of the PTSA events. It was pancakes and lumberjacks, that, everybody was dressed in flannel. We have our star goalie from the goal program, Connor, who had a shutout in hockey. And then just the outstanding job that our kids did on the two goal doors for Black History Month. It's just, I, they, I was out last week, and they sent me that picture. I might have been in tears a little bit, not sure. But just trying to really push our kids outside of the goal hallway and get involved in the extracurriculars, so really proud of the work that they're doing. Okay, Schrader, a lot of it you heard from the liaisons, who are superstars. I mean, I don't really want to follow them. Can you just invite them every time to do this? But in terms of the board goal number one, the Schrader, Schrader team was spry for Warrior Day. Great seeing the 8th graders around Schrader that day, really looking at what high school's gonna be like, what their opportunities are gonna be like, and beyond just their classes, the extracurriculars. The winter season, four Warrior athletes, track, basketball, wrestling, hockey, both boys and girls. And our girls' volleyball team unveiled their state championship banner as well, so all that's pictured there. One thing that did not get put up there, because we just learned this today, Corinthia G is number one in the country in the triple jump. And she was on a national podcast today, and she is top 14 in the history of girls' athletics in the triple jump. And she, if she gets two more inches, then she will be top 10 in the history of girls' track, which the history's not long, guys, so it's really, that's, that's very impressive. And it turns out, she's going to Harvard, too. Quite, quite a woman, somebody to really look up to. Also talked about the lock-in, I think the last time there was a lock-in, I was there at Schrader. Not this time. But it was a great turnout, and everyone had a really, really good time. It was great to see that many kids participate in a senior event, just outstanding. So Willink, and Brian is behind me, but wanted to showcase their 6th grade literacy project, which closely aligns with the board goals, where they went through their literacy class, they did research, and they used claims and evidence to determine what kind of extracurriculars that might not be there, that kids would want for themselves and for their peers, and came up with an esports club, as well as a book club, that the 6th graders presented with those, you know, the literacy skills of claims and evidence. So good job to the Willink team. Owl Middle, Tiffany Lawrence shared that they've been doing a lot of hands-on stuff and also partnering with the community. They are partnering right now with Lollipop Farm and doing community service with Lollipop Farm, but also learning some school, skills with members of the community. You can see there the sewing skills and the hands-on work that they're doing. Also, Tiffany wanted me to let you all know that they are really diving into iXL to try to get a real read on what their kids need and really target interventions for their kids. And also, the SEL work that they are doing, they are allowing the kids to do a self-reflection at the end of each day, so they can use that information also to target interventions and help the kids, and help the kids help themselves. Owl High School is really working hard on academics, as well as their social-emotional learning. They went to the Monroe County Crime Lab and got to see all parts of it, they really enjoyed that. They've been really working hard to make their PE equitable with the Thomas peers, and so you see the picture of them canoeing. And that really takes a lot of teamwork, it takes a lot of patience for each other, and they showed that, and they are really, you know, kind of embracing all of that. And let me make sure I didn't miss anything from... Oh, they had great success on the LA Regents as well. They're very proud of the results on that, with many of their juniors passing that English Regents in January, so. Spry, I love the therapy dog picture. But they really are focusing in with their RTI programs, especially around writing, so the use of data aligns very well with that, with board goal number one. And they're using the data to create interventions and really get into the MTSS Tier 2 by having on-off ramps for that program for the writing RTI, so really being aligned with the MTSS and the ongoing data dives to do that for the kids. And lastly, Thomas, a lot of the stuff that the liaison shared, but they did also, just as Schrader did, they did Titan Day, so that the Willink 8th graders could come up and see what they could expect from Thomas next year and highlight some of the extracurriculars, as well as the high school program. Glenn Whidore wanted to also draw attention to Science Olympiad and speech and debate, and how the academic clubs are really progressing through their season. And also was mentioned, but he wanted to point out that it's the 20th anniversary of the Thomas campout for their senior trip. It's hard to believe it's been, you know, that long, but he is very proud of that tradition for the kids, so he has some pictures from the last year's group there. So really focusing in on data, on mastery and proficiency, the whole child, and having great success at the secondary.
Thanks, Beth. All right, we'll turn it over to I don't know Mark, or no, Kat? Mark? Mark? Okay, Mark. All right, Mark? Thank you very much, ladies.
Hello, happy Valentine's Day.
Thanks, man.
Come on down.
Slide on down.
So you probably know or remember Kathy Palmer and Alyssa Peters, the assistant directors. Happy to be here, happy to present Food Services tonight. Tonight's agenda, we're gonna talk about the State Ed Audit, Summer EBT, universal free meals and its status, participation in general, new kitchen equipment, and cafeteria makeovers. The SED audit is a five-year audit that is conducted from SED on behalf of USDA. We're required to do this, a lot of regulations, a lot of forms, but we got that done, and so we don't have to worry about that for another five years, hopefully. We'll be passed with flying colors due to the hard work of everyone in Food Services. Summer EBT is a new USDA program. You all might remember the nightmare of EBT a few summers ago during COVID. It's now going to be a universal program, meaning it's, it's permanent. And it's summer where every child in a household that qualifies for free and reduced meals will receive $40 a month for food during the summer, which is a good thing. We're expecting now to see an increase in free and reduced applications due to that. So we'll see what happens. That ties into the universal free meals. It's been in the governor's budget the last couple of years, hasn't quite gotten there. It's gotten there this year to some degree in the form of grants, but we are interested to see what's going to happen next year. Participation, I'm gonna slide up. As you can see, in 2022, we served 4,298 lunches compared to a day, compared to 2024, 3,423. So you can really see the difference that it makes on kids eating lunch at school when it's offered to them at no cost. This is a participation slide. You can see that breakfast, year over year, has increased from 556 a day to 818. Lunches increased from 3,372 to 3,423, and those are the main numbers that we're really concerned with. New equipment, as a product of COVID and a product of the universal free, that we were able to serve all kids free, and some of the unique things that we did to make sure every kid got those meals, we had very successful a couple of years, and so we have a lot of extra money to spend, and we're mandated to spend that money by State Ed. So we're getting some new equipment for our schools, and that includes dishwashers, hopefully, that's why I put possibly under there, it just depends on how it works out with code and all those things. But for the sister schools, we're hoping to put dishwashers in, and that eliminates the need for foam, it eliminates the need for plastic and things like that. Dishwasher, new dishwasher, ovens for Schrader, ovens for DeWitt and Plank North, new display coolers, update to the LED lighting for the greenhouse. The next thing, the last thing on our list, talking about is makeovers for the cafeterias. Obviously, you can see the difference here at, this is one wall of Thomas in the south cafeteria. You can see the wall on the left, you can see what it would look like on the right. Now before, please resist the urge to criticize this, because it's, it's a work in progress. It's simply, it's simply a teaser, and what we want to do with this is include... It just depends on how it works out with code and all those things. But for the sister schools, we're hoping to put dishwashers in. And that eliminates the need for foam, it eliminates the need for plastic and things like that. Dishwasher, new dishwasher, ovens for Schrader, ovens for DeWitt and Plank North, new display coolers, update to the LED lighting for the greenhouse. The next thing, the last thing on our list talking about is makeovers for the cafeterias. Obviously, you can see the difference here at, this is one wall of Thomas in the south cafeteria. You can see the wall on the left, you can see what it would look like on the right. Now before, please resist the urge to criticize this because it's a work in progress. It's simply, it's simply a teaser. And what we want to do with this is incorporate the school district's values and core principles, the individual schools' values and core principles, and then also food. So there's going to be a little bit of everything involved. This is just an example of how it could look. And we'll work with each building's teams to figure out what they would like to have and get everybody's input on these things. Oops. The next one is, this is DeWitt. So you can see on the left what it looks like from, this is from the stairs coming into the cafeteria. And you can see what it would look like or could look like once we do the makeovers. The nice thing about this is it's going to be food service funded, so it's not coming out of anybody's budget. So nobody has to worry about those kinds of things. So if anybody asks you about that when it comes up to vote time, you can say it's not impacting the school budget in any way whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it's South Eatery, I noticed. The South Eatery was in there and then the Panda Cafe.
The naming is fluent.
Maybe that'll be something we could have some fun with the kids.
We had South Eatery, North Bistro, a variety of different things. So none of that's set in stone, but we'll figure it out.
Thank you all three of you for all of your continued support of our nutritional values of lunches here at school and everything else you do, too. Thank you guys very much. I just have one last reminder to complete campus news, and that's just a reminder, I think this is a good reminder. Don't forget that next week is February break, beginning Monday, February 19th, and we're on break until the 23rd. So we look forward to having everyone back on February 26th. Thank you very much. That ends our campus news for tonight. Thanks.
Just in case you forgot. No clue, right?
South Eatery, South Eatery.
Oh yeah, that could be fun with the names. But over 2,000 kids were eating breakfast. Now it's 800. I mean, think about that. Over 2,000 kids eating breakfast every day. When it was free, over 2,000. I mean, breakfast is huge.
I'll turn it over to Erin, we'll turn it over to Erin to introduce.
Just giving them a minute to set up. All right.
I am so excited about the next presentation. And to actually do the introduction, I'm just going to throw it over to Mrs. Land, if you wouldn't mind, introduce who we have here with us tonight.
It'd be my pleasure. So I'm happy to introduce Jim McEntee, who you may know as the math guy. But did you also know that he works with our business department? So tonight we get to hear about our YEA program. And if you don't know what that is, you're in for a treat. It is something that I brag about this district all the time. So I'll let Jim do the proper introductions of Roman and AJ, but we're so grateful that you're here tonight to tell us about YEA, which is part of our business curriculum. So welcome.
Thank you. Next to me is Andrew Jasek, one of the teachers of this course over at Webster Schrader and superstar extraordinary. He didn't talk about it, he was a great math student also. Very coy about that.
He's a comedian, though.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you very much for having us tonight. Before we get started with all of the stuff about YEA, I did want to take a minute to acknowledge that this actually also is Career and Technical Education Month, or CTE Month. It's a time to recognize the pivotal role CTE plays in shaping our students' futures. Career and technical education programs offer practical, hands-on skills aligned with workforce needs, providing diverse pathways for students' career aspirations. By recognizing and supporting CTE initiatives, our Board of Education contributes to development of a skilled and competitive workforce for our future. Another thing that I wanted to say thank you for was for, to the board and to the community for your proactive and pragmatic goals, particularly in making financial literacy a graduation requirement. It's a testament to our commitment to preparing our students for the complexities of the modern world. A new report that came out last week concluded that the benefit of just a one semester personal finance course is over $100,000 in lifetime savings and wealth per student. While the mandate may not be statewide yet, Webster's dedication is commendable and sets high standards for our students. Now we actually get to talk about the really cool stuff about YEA. And just so you know, this took me like a little bit in the beginning. You don't say the exclamation point and don't yell "yeah." That's how they know you're not in the class. We're going to dive into one of our most innovative courses, Young Entrepreneurs Academy, or YEA. Established in Webster in 2009, YEA is a year-long course where students develop their own business from the ground up. This is the epitome of project-based learning, offering students a hands-on experience in entrepreneurship. Throughout the course, our scholars receive guidance from mentors, insights from community partners, and exposure to real-world business operations. This culminates in a Shark Tank-style presentation where students pitch their ideas to sponsoring businesses for funding. The work done in this course supports board goal one of academic program and student achievement by giving students an immersive, low-floor, high-ceiling learning environment. In-class mentors play a critical role in our students throughout the, sorry. In-class mentors play a crucial role in guiding our students through the intricacies of entrepreneurship. Whether it's refining their business plans, tackling marketing strategies, or navigating financial projections, these mentors provide invaluable expertise and support. And some of them that we're using this year are upfront. This helps support board goal two of climate and culture by developing collaborative community partnerships that support student learning and achievement.
All right, so this is where I'll take over here. So we're just going to see a couple of slides here of pretty much some of the class field trips we've gone on in the last year or so. So the first one here is Mirror Show Management. So essentially, this is a local Webster business that they're gracious enough to host our class. And as you can see in some of the pictures, this company has commercial manufacturing where they, they help set up for trade shows, national companies. I think Roman could also come up with this, but some of the companies that they worked with are Gatorade, PepsiCo, and just a bunch of really cool businesses that the students were amazed at was right next to our school. So that was that one. So the next one here is, we're also really excited, as you guys will hear about, the investor panel, Saunders. They are gracious enough to also have us on campus and they've been reaching out to us the last few years. So one of those pictures here, the top middle one, is their Tiger Tank, which the students are able to see in November, how their presentations go, and they can model it off of collegiate experience. And as you can see, students are walking around the campus. And then also they, they host guest speakers while we come into RIT. So a couple of the guest speakers the last two years have been Duncan Wardell, the head of innovation at Disney, which was really cool. And also Johnny Cupcakes, he's a famous entrepreneur who, actually, I had to do a little research. He doesn't sell cupcakes, he sells t-shirts. So the students were able to learn a little bit about that. He tricked me as well. And also they've just been able to, we've had a few of the heads of the entrepreneurship program there at RIT come in and talk to the class. So it's been awesome, their partnership. And the last thing I'll say, just to brag a little bit more about some of our students, if you can see here in the top left, the first year, Joshua Michaels, our winner. There's a picture of me and him last year, and he's still doing amazing things. Something that we can see here is Josh took his business idea and is now still working on it at RIT in their entrepreneurship program, running a bunch of different clubs. He just texted me this afternoon and said that he's still running with the idea and he's going to keep us updated and obviously come back and speak about the program. But it's really cool to see one of our first winners, I'm still doing great at RIT. So if we do, we had one more as well. We were also able to, every year, take the students down to register their business at the Monroe County Clerk Office with their DBAs or doing business as. And they were able to, A, get the legal procedures down onto how do you register a business. So there's some of the students going through the paperwork. And then also seeing the Rochester histories. So some of the companies that we saw were Kodak, Xerox, Baushen-Lam, and kind of their original paperwork to kind of see how they get these businesses registered. And the last thing then, is more for fun, we're able to take them out to lunch. So we had a nice lunch at Dinosaur Barbecue. And as, as we all flooded into the restaurant, they, they noticed, obviously, a group of students. And they took the time to, to talk about their story and spent time with our students on how they started their business. It was a really cool experience and it was an awesome day, so.
Up next, in February, this is what we just had last Thursday. We host a special luncheon where our students have the opportunity to interact with some local business leaders and CEOs. It's a chance for the kids to go through and give their business pitches, receive feedback, and make valuable connections with business, functioning businesses in the community. There were some of them, now these were from last year, and these ones here were from last Thursday, from this year. Our YEA course supports board goal number two of district climate and culture and board goal three of operations and financial planning through extensive community and family partnerships to support learning and student business development. It genuinely was a great day to get them to come in, just getting the business leaders to come in. It was a lot of great ideas, exchanges. They had a ton of great ideas for our kids on ways to sort of refine their product and make things a little bit better. It really is an invaluable experience.
All right, so as you can see here, these are just some of the businesses that have decided to be part of our investor panel, which is going to be in about a month here. And as you can see, a lot of local businesses, we really appreciate all the partnerships that they give us. And the day is really cool. If you ever get a chance to see it, the students compete for, for money, they make their pitch. And I've had plenty of students say it's an incredible experience, something great to put on their resume, as well as start their own business. And it's a really neat presentation. And then this is just some of the, last year, this was our student logos and businesses that competed at the investor panel. A couple of things here, as well as you see up on the logos here, are two winners from previous year's Prelude logo is up there with the music notes with Jacqueline Herman. She did an excellent job. And she had an app that developed, basically helping anyone who wants to learn a new instrument, if anybody's ever done Duolingo. That's kind of her, her idea was to basically apply that to music, and it was a really cool idea and she did great. And then, like I talked about earlier, Joshua Michaels, he was two years ago with the app called On Call, would basically help nurses pair with hospitals or places that needed work at a certain time. He actually finished fourth in the country with his idea and application. So another awesome achievement that we've had in the last few years.
And I guess from my vantage point, the first year through this, I was incredibly anxious the entire time that every part of this was going on. And it wasn't really until you stopped and stood, literally in that picture that's on the left, and looked back and you're going, oh my God. You kind of forget how much work they've done, how far they've come. These were non-existent businesses that are legally able to do business by the time that we're done with them. One of the best parts of the program was watching all the students' businesses come to fruition. To say that there's a wide variety of student proposals is an understatement. You may have seen some of our businesses selling or promoting at Webster Community Arts Day, or you may have heard one of our businesses that provides custom background music tracks to several prominent musicians. I'm proud to work in a district that offers programs that encourage students to lean into their entrepreneurial ideas. The skills that our scholars develop will continue, sorry, in the course will serve them their entire life and help put them in the driver's seat of their future. And Jacqueline is on the left, and I believe that's jewelry by Cam that's on the right. They, jewelry by Cam sold a ton at Community Arts Day. This is the boring numbers part of it, like where we take all of the emotion and fun and just make it like three little things. We've had over 230 students come through our course in the last 15 years. This is actually our 15th year of running it. We've filed and, filed over 130 DBAs and started over 130 student businesses. And we've gone through and awarded over 32,000 to those student business proposals. Not knowing about this before and finding out about it, this was one of the best Easter eggs I've ever found. It really does, it encourages problem solving for our students. They really do. You can take this class as far as you want to. And I mean, frankly, it's nice also to see the students have to explain to our entrepreneurs sometimes what some industries are that they might not be super familiar with as well. Our event is on March 21st this year. It's a Thursday. If anyone is interested in coming, we'll, we more than welcome everybody. But it's been a great, great experience. Now we get to hand it off to Roman, who's going to talk about what it's like to actually sit in the class.
The class has taught me a lot. The program emphasized on experiential learning. Rather than just studying theoretical concepts, we actually dive in, straight into the world of entrepreneurship. From ideas to execution, we are guided through the entire process, starting and running a business. My classmates and I have founded 12 businesses just at Schrader alone, which we all have filed our DBAs and had a great time at Dinosaur Barbecue. And I sure all, hope all of you will invest in my business, Expressive Echo Tutoring, where I will be tutoring students on public speaking. I learned valuable lessons that go beyond just textbooks and lectures. One aspect I particularly like is the mentorship provided by many seasoned entrepreneurs and local business professionals that come and work with us. They give us advice and knowledge to aid our development of our businesses. As Mr. McEntee was talking about, we recently went on a field trip right here where we had very delicious food at our luncheon, talking with many of our investors and mentors. They give us very good tips on how we can further develop our businesses and give a better presentation next month. Mr. McEntee did do an amazing job putting it all together, so a big round of applause for him. And this... And as Mr. Jasek talked about, we also visited RIT to watch their Tiger Tank, was very helpful. And MSM, where the CEO discussed what their business plans and their structure and what it's like to start their business in the first place. YEA is not a class where you just sit through boring lectures, but instead you get real-world experience on creating your own business. Next month, I'm excited to present Expressive Echo to real investors, the chance to win a real money to win, to start my business. Thank you.
I would like to just step in real quick. If you guys think Roman is funny with his slideshow earlier, you would love to see his presentations in class. I'll just leave it at that.
All right, can't wait, can't wait.
I just want to say something. At 2016, my daughter was the only girl, the only freshman in YEA. So for me to see so many girls in these pictures is really exciting. My daughter learned leadership skills. She learned how to speak in public. She was the last one during that year. And I think she, a true woman, this program helped her with that. Audi Sports Net, that was her business. It's a really cool program and I would advise any parent, if you have access, please encourage your children to take this.
We're glad you had a great experience.
Yes, it was amazing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, too. I know how hard it is and I've seen how hard you've worked this year. I was at a Chamber of Commerce and to get the business owners. And I want to thank you and your team for telling our story and to bring in all these businesses that are amazing mentors for our children. But it's also nice to have them come in and see that. We have some really pretty incredible kids here, too, that will go on and do amazing things. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. They actually cornered Mr. Neenan on the way out. They did such a great job.
And I'm so glad you said that, Linda, because that was actually what I wanted to talk about, too, is that this is an amazing program and you guys are doing a great job. But Jim is really taking, trying to take it to another level in his effort. Chamber of Commerce, he's connecting with businesses. It's wonderful, it's absolutely wonderful. The energy right now is just fantastic with YEA, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Can I get a motion to approve the Business Department Instruction Report as presented? So moved, Shanna? Second, Linda? All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us on to Board Business. Oh, he's moving front and center this time, huh?
This is a different business presentation. Roman, maybe you could comment, commentate in the background.
Yeah, good to go.
All righty. All right, first order of business this evening is our November's Treasures Report that you have before you. Just a couple highlights. November wraps up tax collection season for us. Also received our first sales tax payment. Our, our first quarter is the third quarter of the county, so, because our fiscal years don't align. You'll notice some of those expenses Mr. Belfer talked about on his list starting to show up for the month of November, with some of increased expenditures there as we try to spend down that fund balance as required by SED. Overall, cash flow remains strong. We are maximizing our investments. And I think for the first time ever, all of our rates are over 5% or something in 14 years of doing this that I've never... And I think for the first time ever, all of our rates are over 5% or something in 14 years of doing this that I've never seen before. So pretty excited about that. So that's our treasures report overview.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, with that, can I have a motion to approve the November 2024 Treasures Report as presented? So moved Carol, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thought Exchange. This is our third year of utilizing the Thought Exchange to get community feedback for our budget. And so myself and Joe Montemiro have to give him huge credit too for assisting with this. Ran this Thought Exchange for the entire month of January, sent out a couple reminders for participation. And just going to review the results and what we got back. And kind of every year we're learning a little, doing something a little different to try to learn some more, see what we could do, improve on the process. And it was pretty exciting this year. So, you know, still high participation. Actually, this year we saw a lot more community member participation than in previous years compared to staff and then staffing community. So still pretty high engagement with over, you know, full, close to 500 thoughts and people adding comments. So still very excited about that. I think maybe next year we might send out a couple more reminders and maybe utilize some, push it out to the buildings.
I got 100 reminders.
Do you think that it's because it was a little bit different this year where you couldn't rate, you had to actually?
Well, yeah, we changed that like
The format?
Because it seemed like, and yeah, it seemed like the ratings skewed a lot. Basically, it polarized the results.
Yes.
So when Joe and I would go through it, we would tease out because we'd see, you know, things that were rated continuously over and over and over. And you could kind of, not that they were bot accounts, but they acted similar in that matter. So we felt like some of it was skewed and we wanted to look at, you know, what was truly input as far as, yes, small class sizes versus, let's just go click on small class sizes. So we tried it a little bit differently this year.
It feels more true, honestly, because it was on it. You couldn't see anybody else's comments. You had to put your own in.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah, much more pure.
So Brian, compared to last year, did we have less participants or did it go down?
I would think like it looks like it went down, but I'm thinking it remained the same. You just couldn't interact with it multiple times.
You got, you can't see how many unique, you know, submissions you have. Probably not, right? Because the whole point is that it's anonymous.
It's anonymous. That's saying we couldn't. It would probably take some work to kind of tease that out.
No, that's okay. I was just kind of curious if we were seeing any, you know, more engagement or less engagement. You know, sometimes I think that depending on the concerns of parents, we may see less, you know, less engagement if there's not as many concerns. You know, you show up when you're, when you're really concerned about things. So I was kind of wondering how that participation was.
I think we had more people putting in their ideas versus people just going to it and liking other people's ideas.
That makes sense.
So that's the breakdown and we embrace something new this year with Thought Exchange. We let artificial intelligence do it for us. So Joe and I sat back because they have a new, what they call Thought Exchange Advisor. And we let it run to see what it would give us and how it would react.
So it takes all the comments.
It takes all the comments. And does the analysis.
Yeah, I think that's kind of interesting, right? Takes away that idea that somebody could be manipulating, you know, manipulating the outcome of that. It's AI that's summarizing.
Yeah, and it took away some of the, like, you know, in previous years, we would get, you know, random comments that we'd have to remove, you know. Like the, just, you know, like my mom would put in there, you know, Brian Freeman is a great guy, you know. So, you know, you know, those comments that we would
Are AI generated?
They are all AI generated.
It's interesting because some of them also sound the same and so that kind of makes sense.
So you could, and so like we asked three questions. The first one, as we planned for school year, what are the most important things our district needs? So AI generated the summary for us. And the fun part that as comments were coming in, it re, it changed itself. So if you went in on January 10th, this would look a lot different than January 12th or 31st. So it was interesting to watch as, as the things came in.
I was at PTA saying, the parents were disgusting. I was encouraging, and then they were saying, it's only three questions. And I think it would be interesting to analyze Thought Exchange itself, like, would it be possible to be, to put a question on? Like, how would you most like to indicate?
No, I don't think it's too crazy. Yeah, I didn't think of that. I don't, yeah.
You know, every time I'd say, hey, there's Thought Exchange, you should look at it. I looked at it, but it was three. I don't know if I want to think about that.
Yeah. They could have put the questions into Chat GPT, Chat GPT, given them an answer and they could have copied and pasted into her. So they wouldn't even had to have think about it.
I think, you know, typically it's like one question, right? It wasn't last
Yeah, we, in the year, the first year we did it, we did a sequence of questions as well.
Yeah, I like the sequence of questions. I think it's difficult for people to think, right, to stop and actually think about answers and sometimes seeing, you know. So I actually, for me, this was more guidance for me this year when I was filling my own out.
So for every question then, it, it created two, you know, a side A and side B. Kind of like the thoughts that people would comment on. It'd be like, how do you rank this one? I'm putting four stars over here, putting one star over here. So in essence, it separated it out for us and then found common ground for each question. So we have some very common themes. There is an academic focus with all the questions. Then there was like a non-academic focus. And then what brought it together, it was just general student support. A need for balance amongst the questions. So like question two, what are the top priorities? We worded all the questions slightly different. So, you know, generally the feedback was is still academics with a balanced approach. Student well-being are the top priorities across all the questions.
It's so interesting because this really reflects what I hear from parents. Like I, you know, you hear both of, exact both sides of this when you're talking to people. So it's so interesting that.
Right. And then that last question, what programs should be prioritized for successful school year, really drilled down and you saw a lot of the whole student come through with the importance, a lot of extracurriculars, the support activities, sports, music, the arts, community work, student internship opportunities were the other side. And then, you know, still the academic focus, but all common were this well-balanced with all three questions.
Yeah, it's interesting because we continue to see the same themes each year that mental health is still a concern. You know, these things are still important to parents.
Right.
Parents in the community, like because
Very helpful. Thank you.
So yeah, you know, every year we reflect back on like, what can we change for next year? Plus Thought Exchange in itself is evolving. Like this was completely new to us this year. And so we'll, you know, get feedback and see about it next year. So.
Brian, just for next year, I mean, one of the things I'd love to see is, is that difference in what's important between elementary and secondary parents. We did that the one year and then we haven't been able to see that this year. And I, I think that's really important, you know, it might be something you'll be able to see. What those themes are between the different age groups for those kids.
Yeah, we could design something, yeah.
Thank you.
So we take this in every kind of conversation we have budgeting with all of our stakeholders and weave it into it and incorporate it. And so when we start our workshops in March, we'll incorporate, you know, hey, this was a request. This is in line with what we were hearing through the Thought Exchange. So we weave it into all of our discussions.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So next up is a fun conversation about the 2425 tax cap in Governor's Budget Proposal that was released at the end of January after the last time we met. And, you know, just as a thought, I think this is the most miscategorized concept in New York State because it is not a cap on our taxes. We call it the tax cap. That's what everybody calls it. But it's really a cap on the levy, not a cap on your taxes, which can be influenced by a multitude of things. So, you know, it's a multi-step formula. I'm going to run through that for everybody with one new addition this year to the formula that we haven't seen in a long time. But just to review the formula for everybody, you know, it's like 12 steps. So we'll take you through it. There's four major points of calculation here. First is the tax-based growth factor, and that's assigned to every district in New York State from New York State Tax and Finance. And really what that is, is a change in taxable property year over year. So that comes right from New York State Tax and Finance, gets sent to all the districts. We plug it into the formula. Pilots, those are the payments in lieu of taxes. Those are the special tax deals that we have in the district. Those balance out in the formula unless they change year over year. So what happens in one year generally happens in the next year. So this is where we get the cap from, the Consumer Price Index. This is the part of the formula where everybody gets the 2%. This is based on inflation. It's 2% or lower. So since the start of the tax cap, it's been close to zero to as high as eight. So anytime it's over two, it automatically defaults to two. So this year it's 4.1 is what it's trending. It's actually, so the formula gives us two. New this year, and I've highlighted it, pension exclusions. So either ERS or TRS, if they change by 2% or more, this exclusion kicks in. So this year, ERS is changing by slightly more than 2%. So that kicks in an exclusion for the pension. It's very small. You'll see that calculation. But this is the first time in over a decade that the pension exclusion has added to the calculation. It's one of those other exemptions. So. And then the other large point of calculation to try to distill it down is what they call the capital exclusions. And all that is, is your total budget for capital expenditures. Principal and interest for construction and buses, any transfers to capital funds. If a district has energy performance contracts, any kind of capital leases or what we pay to BOSIs for their capital expenditures. Add all those up. The only three we have are the ones that are in bold. And then you subtract all the state aid we get for those items. So our building aid with some exemptions, all of our transportation aid, that is for the buses. And then the BOSIs aid we get for the rent and capital that we pay to them. So it's all that minus the aid gives you your capital exclusions. Oops, wrong way. So just to compare to show you, these are all the districts in Monroe County, because this is what sways the formula most. With a lot of people say, well, 2% is not really 2%. It's this point in the formula that sways really who has very large tax levy limit numbers or who's got tiny tax levy limit numbers. It's the variance in this right here. So you could see there's, there's five districts that are over a 1% year-over-year change. With us being the fifth and you could see the other districts that are above us. A lot of unique things can happen year over year, which play into this adjustment. So I just wanted to show that as a, as a benchmark of how our numbers look in comparison to the county. So, and it's all four towns, all of our, all total assessed value. So let's see what the formula looks like. See if I can format this to fit the screen. So you can see everything. Yeah, maybe one more. Right, close enough. So you see, we always start the formula with our levy from the previous year. That's highlighted in green. And then you multiply, just going right down is the tax-based growth factor AC. So we're slightly over 1%. What does that give us in dollars? Plus our pilots for this year. We take all that, add it together, get a subtotal. Now minus out what our capital exclusions were for last year. So those are in blue. So you could show the bottom part of the formula from last year becomes the top part of the formula for this year. So that gets subtracted and that is, you know, the midway point of the formula, as you could say, of our multi-stepped. Now here comes the CPI. It's 2% because we're going to be over. So you multiply that, get your allowable levy growth factor. Put the pilots back on the bottom and then we start with the exemptions. Tort orders and judgments. We'd be bankrupt if we had a tort order exclusion. That pretty much is if we're getting, have to settle a lawsuit against the district that is 5% or more of our entire tax levy. So those are pretty much nonexistent. Then these are next year's capital exclusions. So what I did was project out all of our debt minus all the aid. This is what's left over. Add that and then you add the pension contributions. So this year, ERS is slightly over 2%. It's one tenth of a percent over a 2%. So you take that difference and multiply it by what is projected for your, all of your ERS salaries next year. And you actually get that number from the comptroller. Since the comptroller controls the employee retirement system, we report all of our salaries in real time to the comptroller on a month-to-month basis. So they take what we've reported and they project it out for us. So it's already in the system and we just have to calculate it based on their projection. So our increase for next year is a 3.3. That's our cap. We can go to 3.3 with a simple majority. 2% plus the slightly over 1% growth factor. And in essence are the two points that are vaulting us into a 3.3. Our capital exclusions debt to aid ratio has stayed relatively stable. So that's not increasing us. It's the 2% plus the slightly over 1% plus the exclusion for pension gets us to the 3.3. I've provided all the backup of what we report, all the capital exclusion data. So you can see, you know, just to show you, current year is 13.1. Next year is 15.2 for ERS. So subtract them. There's our difference, .001. Multiply that by projected salaries. We get a $25,295 exemption because of that increase. Everything else is the same year over year. What our debt is minus all the aid and then back up with our debt service too. So that is the formula as it is right now. And that's, you know, due come end of February, March 1st to the comptroller, our first draft. That doesn't mean we can't change it. Doesn't mean they can't change it as part of the process. You know, throw different numbers at us or, you know, tweak it. So right now, this is what I call, call it the draft. It's our first go-around. Generally, it's 99.9% accurate at this point. There could be some slight changes if that projection for ERS changes on the salaries because that comes right from the state system. So could have a little change there through the process. But for the most part, this is what we'll submit for March 1st as being our levy cap. There's a lot of information there. It's probably the most complicated process we go through in the budget process. Because it's so multi-tiered, it pulls numbers from a variety of different sources. SED, Department of Real Tax and Finance, Division of Budget, the comptroller. They all kind of pull information from all those groups. So does get a little, you know, confusing. We're not as easy as the municipalities. They just follow the CPI. They don't have this multiple step formula. Alrighty, so with that, let's go right into now what the state aid budget is looking like and some things there. So So, the executive budget proposes an increase in aid for all the districts, just about $825 million, so about a 2.4% increase. So, what's happening? So, let's take foundation aid. That is our largest state aid amount. This would be coming up the first year where the formula is just allowed to go, but not so fast, my friends. Those of you that like College Game Day, watch a lot of college football, the governor has tweaked the formula. Inflation factor is a large part of the formula because if inflation goes up, costs go up. So, they, when they originally developed the formula, they put an inflation factor into it to adjust for that. So, as part of this, the governor's run has arbitrarily used a different inflation factor. So, it's gone from 4.1 to 2.4. So, that has squelched the number that is going to be available. So, it's a reduction for all school districts. So, if you compare what the formula should be to what the governor's run is, it's $629,767 less than what the formula showed in November. The other large thing that's being set up for is the elimination of Save Harmless. So, districts were in this, for lack of a better term, unwritten rule agreement handshake that if you got X amount of dollars this year, regardless, you're going to get X amount of dollars in foundation aid the following year. 337 districts in the state that are losing money based on the elimination of Save Harmless with a transition adjustment that's called to it. So, what is that going to do? That's going to have a lot of districts fighting over the state aid pot of money because it's almost evenly split between 337, I think 336 that are getting some kind of increase. On the expense-based side, so all of our formula aids, BOSEs, transportation, building, those are all fully funded and no changes to the formula. And then just to see where we're at with all the schools across the county, you see one school does have a decrease. One is net neutral. The highest increase was $2.7 million. The highest percentage increase year-over-year was 8.73. Average increase was 2.36. The average dollar increase just slightly below $1 million county-wide. So, you know, you could say our formula was slightly better than the average overall dollar amount percentage, given our size, wouldn't have changed that much, but still above the average. Questions so far on the state aid items?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So, the state aid just increased, the 825 is just really inflation?
The 825 million?
Yeah.
That was-
It's a 2.4-
The 2.4-
Increase-
Is the overall state number of how much new money they've added to state aid this year. That's where that broad number comes from.
But it's really just covering the inflation that they've changed to 2.4, so it's really, sort of?
Sort of. I mean, it gets a little hairy in there of dissecting.
Yeah.
Some of that 825, you subtract out because it's a UPK grant, so it's really down to 725 now. So, you're going to see, and all the listeners from NISBA and from everybody else, NISCUS, ASBO, that 825 number is going to be what is shown, that that's what the state is supplying. But you could peel back the layers of this onion and drill it down more.
Mm-hmm. Is this still arguable between legislators?
Yep. And that season will commence in March for solid 30 days. In essence, there's going to be a lot of districts duking it out, legislative districts because it impacts a wide, those 336 districts are a wide swath of the state. And so, it'll be, you know, New York State politics. It's like, okay, I'm going to hold this carrot, and we're going to start wheeling and dealing. Okay, you want the Save Harmless back? Here's what I want. It's the typical, that just happens to be the pawn in the negotiating game this year for school districts.
And the Senate and the Assembly have both put out different budgets. So, we'll see their budgets, see what their, you know-
In early March, the Senate and the Assembly will release what they call their one-house budgets and say, this is what we want, this is what we want. And then the governor has just released theirs, and then we'll try to marry them all together.
Yeah. So, it's everybody putting out their priorities, if you will. So, but we've already heard, we've had a chance to speak with both our senators and our legislators in the area to advocate for some of this.
So, some other budget items of note, $10 million for the NICET trust to support reading training for elementary teachers. That's going to be grant funding, is our understanding. That's going to the teacher centers to be grant-funded out. But Mrs. Land, I'm sure you're happy to know that there is now reporting requirements for the district if this goes through, that we have to, in the portal for K-3 reading curriculum. So, that's new paperwork for us. A big one for us is new funding, no funding for prior-year adjustments that are owed to districts. So, SED is constantly going back and auditing our reports. So, like Capital Project from 1996, we have money that's owed to us after the fact. Historically, what has always happened, we get a fund letter, it's addressed to Mr. Neenan. I'll get a copy of it that says, "We found that we owe you $135,000. Your number 850 in the queue. We'll get that in 20 years." Normally, the state always sets aside a small pot of money to pay those down. There is no funding for those back aid payments. So, but if you, they give you overaid, they take that right away. So, there's 100 million additional funding for UPK. So, that federal funding is expiring, so we'll see how that plays out. Really, really important for us and for a lot of people, the $35,000 salary waiver for retirees was not included. So, that got everybody's attention because a lot of districts and a lot of municipalities rely on that waiver for retirees to go above that threshold before their pension gets diminished because we have a lot of subs that are retirees, a lot of long-term subs that take that and would qualify. So, something to watch because I know we're very interested in that. School meals, 11 million to continue the state subsidy for community eligibility. We may be eligible for next year. We could not make the numbers work for the remainder of this year, but it's looking like maybe we will next year, so more to come, like Mr. Belfort alluded to. CTE education funding. Right now, there's a cap on salaries for programs that, like BOSEs, the Foreman Center, that offers CTE programs. There's a cap on the salaries. That's a real problem for program expansion, for people to attract quality teachers into those programs. One change to the zero emission bus mandate grants. Any grants that you get, NYSERDA, any other green group that are out there normally would reduce the cost of our local share, not transportation aid. So, we can still get transportation aid on those grants. And then this one is a cost shift, special education residential placements pushes the state share for room and board onto districts. So, if we have students that are in residential placements, normally it was sharing mechanisms between state and district. This would push additional costs onto the district and away from the state. The governor's number, so what does it mean for Webster? Pull those up for you. And just visually, yellow means pretty accurate, blue means not very accurate. For when you look at the governor's initial breakdowns of what gets released, it's based on outdated data by the time January comes around. And so, I'll get into the greater details there. So, this is what the governor's proposed. Did have, you know, recent Q and A with a local reporter about why, you know, was asking about the loss of money, and you know, you go right to building aid. We're down $4.4 million. Well, SED's deadlines don't align with the governor's deadlines. So, governors pull in their data from November 15th. It's got to be by November 15th. So, but SED for state aid, for building aid, we don't have to report it until December 31st. So, all of our reports that went into the state right before the holiday break aren't included. So, it looks like we took a large loss of building aid, which drops our number down substantially. It's really not true. So, let me break those down for everybody. So, the excess cost aids, those are aids for students with disabilities. It's based on student data that is at the start of the school year. So, the numbers the governor has out there that are on the spreadsheet that I shared with everybody will be updated with the spring release from the legislature because they'll have more up-to-date student enrollment. I actually think it's projecting higher, our actual aid will be higher in these two categories than what the governor is projecting based on the student enrollment changes that we've seen throughout the year. So, that will change when we have that workshop, I guarantee you. BOSEs aid, so that's based on fall projections. Literally, you know, school starts September 7th. I think September 14th, BOSEs is asking us, how, what do you think you're going to spend for the rest of the remaining 10 months of the school year? And that's what's utilized for the government. So, it's always way too high what the governor's number is. So, and our aid ratio has gone down since last year. So, we've actually lost 2% in our aid ratio, going from 66, like 66.8 to 64.7 now. So, that will have a little impact, but I imagine we're going to stay pretty stable in BOSEs aid because we generally spend about the same every year. So, but the projection is always off. Building aid, like I said, this is perfect. You know, the fall projections, we get them in October 15th when the final reports are due, but the final reports aren't in there until December. We got ours in a little earlier. So, the governor's projection is lower, and so I will have a completely different building aid number based on that. So, her number is not accurate at all. And then the transportation aid one, same thing, projection based on what we submitted in September, and we'll update that come our workshop in March and April with what we actually think we're spending for transportation. You know, I projected our transportation contract in September would be much higher than it is for what BOSEs does for us, so I know that won't be as accurate. So, looking to see, we got to project out what we're spending 23, 24 to get an accurate projection of 24, 25 aid in these categories. So, that's what we'll be doing over the next six weeks to see where we're at. And so, the governor's numbers, you can always take with a little grain of salt. The foundation aid is the real one we always look at. Everything else is very, very fluid. So. Questions on state aid? Thank you.
I just, you know, this is my second year, so I'm starting to understand things a little more. But the importance of all this is that we have to have a budget for next year. So, just to make it clear to people, there's purpose in all of these numbers, and I appreciate how you put it together.
Thank you. Yeah, it's difficult because there's so many moving pieces between SED, the Division of Budget, and who's reporting what, and what's really going to happen and what's not. So, try to break it down as to the, you know-
And you do a great job with that. And actually, just so the board is aware, Brian's actually been invited to work with the Executive Committee at NISBA, and he's going to be doing a podcast, the president of NISBA, right? Is it NISBA?
Yeah, NISBA, yeah.
Yeah.
Should be released in this week.
This week, so, yeah. You're on a panel, right? So, thanks, Brian. Thanks, Jeff.
All right. Continue along. So, I did a capital improvement final report for the 2018 project for you. And then, rather than read it to you, I thought I'd show it to you. So, thanks to Paul Conley and Blaine Cunningham. There's a report in there that breaks down what we did at every single building, but I thought it'd be great if we just showed you. So, yeah, we did a lot of work in that 2018 project. I think my favorite part of the project is actually the Schrader Library. Because it's no longer 1995 in there.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. So, yeah, and the more detailed report is on board docs for everybody so you can see every little nuance that happened, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. I'll keep going. Next up is our technology lease. It's hard to believe it's almost a decade since we started this program and with the initial new laptops for everybody. So, this is for the three-year cycle. Majority is our laptops as part of this lease with some additional equipment for some server upgrades and some, you know, odds and ends here and there that we always change out every year. But the bulk of this one is for new laptops for everybody. And BOSEs will take care of this for us. It's one of the benefits. They do all the borrowing for us over the three years, and then we get aid on the entire purchase plus the borrowing. So, it's quite little financial system we got going for ourselves here. And so, with your approval, we'll get the paperwork going and order away.
Brian, that for this summer, when would they hand in their laptops?
So, yeah, it'll probably start at the end of June and roll out through the summer.
And then another three years?
And then for three years, and then we'll be right back here getting new laptops again.
Did they choose them?
No, I have a question. Are you ready to go?
We know they're going to be a Dell product. We don't know the exact model.
Okay. Nice.
Or pilot anyone. Given feedback.
All right. Motion to approve the instruction technology lease as presented. So, moved, Carol. Second, Maria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right. Next up is two new clubs for approval as part of our extra class. One at Schrader and one at Thomas for your approval. Young Women's Empowerment at Schrader and the Rocket Club over at Thomas. So, we'll set those up with your approval for some extracurricular accounts for fundraising and their needs for their clubs.
Motion to approve the Halloween Club charters. Carol, so moved. Second, Linda. All in favor?
Alrighty. Next up is our bus purchase approval. This is really to start the process going for the proposition this year. If you, as you noticed, we've been working on reducing the fleet in the past year based on the audit recommendations we received. We're far, we had far too many surplus buses for how many active routes we have. So, we've started to bring that down. So, we don't need to replace as many. We used to do 10 and about three minis every year. So, we're only doing five large buses and two- So we're only doing five large buses and two minis. There is a savings, but not as much as you would think because the, just as an example, the price for a large bus that we'd order from the same vendor in 2020, 21, it's $124,000. Now with the cost of manufacturing, the state contract number for the buses, it's gone up $44,000 per bus. So even though we're buying less buses, the price is now 168 on our 66-passenger buses. So that eats up a significant amount of the savings of buying 10 to five. Now, it's even worse on the mini side with the wheelchair capability. So that same year, a minibus with wheelchair capability was, was coming in about $76,000. Right now, they're at 131. So significant increases in the prices, and they've all been approved because they're all on state contract pricing. So those increases get approved by the Office of General Services every year. So we've just seen, this is the area where we've seen prices really, really skyrocket.
I'm trying to reiterate to parents, you know, too, that this is the only way, this is how you purchase replacement buses. You can't just have it as part of your budget. We have to have this as a proposition. It'll be here every year, and we have to approve that replacement.
If we wanted to do that as part of our budget, we would've probably had to start that process 50 years ago. Some districts do do that. That is one way to finance it with a line item in the budget. But that is a very large hill to climb, so you would've had to start it. Districts that do that, started that process when they switched from horses to buses.
Any other questions? All right, this is a roll call.
People, I'm trying to get people to stay for my presentation.
It's about 1939, I think. Honest to God, I think it's about 1939.
Well, I joke, but transportation, transportation law still references horses.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. You can't honk the horn because it might starve the horses as you pass by. It's still in the statutes.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And that's when school bus yellow came into play, is why, when they made that transition. Because, part of that is because you could see it. It's one of the few colors that all eyes can see, is why they went to yellow. Yep. Little tidbit.
See? Look at that.
Just add into your presentation, Brian.
Trivial with the Bryans.
So this is a roll call vote, but I need a motion and a second to approve the transportation process. Motion, Linda, second. Shanna? It's you, Heather.
Janice?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Shanna?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe that concludes everything I have for this evening.
Oh, yes, you're done. Mr. Swinson is up next.
Thanks, Brian.
So we, as we discussed recently, that we have a first read for your review on the workplace violence prevention policy, per the new requirements for the New York State Department of Labor. So we'd ask you to review that and have a first read.
So we all read it?
Any questions?
Should be pretty good, unless there's questions. All right, then a motion to approve the first read of the workplace violence protection policy. We'll move it forward to a second reading at our next business meeting. So moved Shanna, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, first read passes.
All right, the calendar. So just a couple notes. There is two weeks built into this calendar at the winter break. We will have off Lunar New Year in January, and we will also have off the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I think those are some of the key highlights of this calendar. It's a pretty straightforward calendar for us. It does have two raining days at the end of the year for us, which is a little bit different, but just a nuance there. And this does build in four snow days for us, like we always try to do. So again, pretty straightforward calendar.
Questions? All right. Motion to approve the first reading of the 24, 25 school year and move it forward to a second reading at our next regular business meeting.
So moved Linda, second.
Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. This takes us to board member highlights, and I know Carol, we had a nice breakfast the other day, but I'm sure you have other things you want to mention, but I'm gonna go to you first. You've been in a lot.
This was a busy.
She has.
Today. I was gonna work the other way. Today, we were fortunate to see.
Oop, turn it back on. Make sure it's on. There you go.
Technology.
Let go.
But, okay, now I let it.
There you go.
You should be able to turn me off, maybe. Okay, so we went to the Schrader Library and sponsored by the PTSA, we watched Jimmy Highsmith play, and it was lovely. And you know what? It was chilling. I mean, but the little kids, the kids in the pre-K were there in the front row, and just going with the music and the high school kids becomes so much more civilized, I swear, when they're there. So it was delightful. We read, I think all of us read, at Plank North, Read Aloud Day, I read to fifth graders. It made me want to be a teacher again. And they asked me to come back sometime, and I was like, yeah, yeah. Then we went, I went to the legislative breakfast, and the significant thing there was the student presenters. And they talked about food, the, the most compelling one to me was when the student talked about food. And she had to think in the morning whether she was going to get, her mother would have enough money to put in her lunch card so she would be able to eat lunch. And that was, the whole thing was a huge thing for me, but that, the student speakers should be the ones that go to Albany, yeah, and talk to the legislators. And then there was the family engagement meeting at St. Rita's, which we hope will draw more and more people, and somehow we'll have that happen. And then two PTSA meetings. So it was a busy month for me. Anybody else, they can do theirs, but I'm like, and I just loved that part of it.
There. Now do I turn off?
You can, sure.
Do we have a date for that next parent engagement meeting? I don't remember.
We have a, we have our March thing coming up.
Is it the convening?
The convening.
That's what I thought. I remember we were going back and forth on the dates. The 23rd of March. Perfect. Okay. It'll be advertised, but we're throwing that out there.
I did get some parent feedback on that. I think we still have some, there were some parents, especially at Thomas, that weren't sure what the, what the family engagement was about for this last meeting. So I think, you know, one of the things we'll have to do is just make sure that we, we still have some, you know, communication to do to explain like what they are and, and what's gonna happen during that meeting, so we can get people to come. So some people didn't come because they weren't sure what to expect. But it's fantastic to have it, continuing to have it. And were you still going, Janice?
No, go ahead. As long as Carol's done, go on.
I was gonna touch on the same, same things. I really loved reading at Plank North. It was wonderful. And Missy, who she does, yeah, who does the blogging, she was there coordinating it, and she does such a good job also of telling our story. And the kids came down and picked you up and brought you down, and then they added that element of writing letters back, like they wrote thank you notes. And so for my class, I got these thank you notes back, and they were practice writing and illustrations on the back. And it made me so happy, not just me, but my family too. Like Sophia and Sam loved reading the letters from the kids, their books that they liked when they were younger, so it was really wonderful. And State Road is getting their Gaga Pit, which I'm super excited about. Mm-hmm. And Dr. Keys has worked really hard. They're gonna be getting their Gaga Pit, which is wonderful because the fundraising was not gonna be enough to cover that part, so I'm really excited for them. And they've continued, as we saw, with their family engagement. I'm really proud of that. I'm really proud of State Road for engaging their parents like they are and getting, and getting them involved with processes within the school as well. So those were just some things we hadn't, hadn't touched on. It was wonderful. And Information Exchange was very, very, I was happy to hear at Information Exchange that we engage our, that BOSI's rep to come in and look at our chemicals and do our stocking and our inventorying. I didn't realize, I didn't think about the fact that, you know, different teachers have different chemicals in their rooms that they're working on, like, and, and they could be old, and teachers are worried about, you know, they want to keep them because they're worried they're not gonna be able to buy anymore. And how important it is for safety to make sure that we're inventorying that properly. It was really, it's definitely very good information. I liked that one.
I'm just gonna touch on strategic planning. We have been meeting, the BYE annual survey will be going out mid-March, mid to late March. We put some final touches on it, we'll meet again. But what's come out of strategic planning is we've decided to have two subgroups form, one to take a look at zero emission buses and one to look at artificial intelligence. So we will be, both committees will be meeting in the near future to discuss those. They'll consist of staff, board members, administration, and then we will report back on that. And that's all I'm gonna report of.
Go ahead. Carol Thomas, coming to the Thomas Music Program. And Erin was there, you were there. And it was, it was delightful because it was a small program of students, singers, performers. It was wonderful.
Yeah, it's great.
And the students mentioned it earlier with the two musicals, Finding Nemo and Catch Me If You Can. Those were great. If anyone had a chance to see those, it was amazing. I also had in my notes, we are meeting about zero emissions buses after the break, so we have our first meeting scheduled for the 29th on leap day. And then the only other thing I wanted to add, we talked about this at the last meeting, and it's bus patrol. So I know I harp on buses a lot, but student safety, and we talk about mental health at the alleged breakfast, and student safety is always at the forefront. And I'm not sure, I mean, we've tried to get this out there. I know Adam Bello was a huge push for this, so our buses have the stoplight cameras on them now, and they've had them on for, was it January 11th, what started the trial, something like that?
It's about a month. Right, I think it's right around a month now.
It's pretty close to, it's no, it's gonna be no longer the, I don't wanna say free period, but the warning period, the trial period, starting within a couple of days. If you're caught, it's gonna be a $250 fine, which we don't collect, it's not us. But I got some numbers just to share, and in the 20 school days, so this is as of Friday, but in the 20 school days that we've had it running, there have been 328 violations. That's, that's just the, in Webster, so that doesn't even necessarily include our buses that might've been in another town. And so that's, if you look at it, that's an average of 16 times a day, people are running the reds on our buses, yeah.
So it's a challenge for us.
So it is a challenge. Like I said, it's, the warning period is almost done, so you never, ever, ever should run those anyways. It's always been a huge issue of mine. But, yeah, so I just wanted to share that because, yeah, it's scary. It's scary, yeah. Um, anyways. Is there anything else anyone want to share? Okay. All right. Then we move on to consent agenda. So I don't know if there are any questions on the consent agenda. Not? Awesome. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved Linda, second Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Which brings us to our visitor speaking time. We have people in the hallway, just wanna make sure, yeah, they know that it's, it's not like obvious by the screen, so. We do have one speaker tonight. Same thing as always, code of conduct applies, the usual speech, the board's here to listen. And one? Yeah, no, no.
No, hold on a minute.
Oh, sure.
Four minutes.
Yep. Yeah, 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 no, you're right. I was thinking like I had time to give it. You can use these chairs.
We'll call her up in just a second. We'll call her up in just a second.
So again, just briefly, again, the code of conduct applies. Every speaker has four minutes. We have one speaker this evening, and the board is here as always to listen. It's not a time for dialogue, but we're always happy to follow up, and I know we've had a lot of people involved, so. Heather, if you want to announce name?
Kai. Hello, everyone. This speech is a collaboration between myself and Sasha Daniels. My name is Kyloz. I use he, him, or they, them pronouns. And I am a queer and neurodivergent student in eighth grade at Willink Middle School. Me and some of my friends have been purposely misgendered, physically and verbally attacked, as well as made fun of, which is all clearly bullying. I'm not here just for myself and my friends, but also hundreds of queer students across our district. I want all students to feel more safe in their school communities and settings. I want them not to feel afraid walking down school hallways. I want them to have their identities respected and valued. I want everyone, students and teachers, to be educated about the value of queer students. We are so much more than a label, a gender, a sexuality. We are human. We are everywhere, and some of our talents shape the good things in the world today. Students deserve to be educated. They deserve to be happy. They deserve so much more than this. They deserve so much more, and I want to give it to them, because our schools are not enough to protect us. Jokes about being in the queer community are damaging and embarrassing to us. Yelling at us, throwing food at us in the lunchroom, destroying pride flags, arguing against our queer identities is bullying. Recording us, taking pictures of us inside your buses, in your schools, and putting them on social media are violation of our schools and New York State's code of conduct. The people whose photos have been taken inside our schools have reported these on numerous accounts to your system. Nothing was done, and nobody cared. Teachers have witnessed this and stood by, but did nothing. Administrators were begged for help and said harmful things, but did nothing. This is why I'm here today. How long do we have to be invisible in your system, your teachers, your subsuits, and your hotlines, and your principals? These very same people who are supposed to care for us. How long do we have to scream for you to hear a whisper? How many more suicides, beatings, and abuse are you going to ignore? If you ignore us, all we are going to do is get louder, louder, and louder. I want to make the world better, but first we start here, in this building and in our schools. In one survey, 81.8% of LGBTQIA students felt unsafe in school, and a study showed that if you use someone's chosen name and pronouns, it drastically reduces their thoughts of suicide, depression, and anxiety. All students and staff need to understand this and know how badly their actions affect us. We are trying to make this better for all of us, for all the students. Some teachers and administrators are amazing allies, but many who are uneducated are just going to keep harming us. So I'm asking you to notice, not dismiss, and take this seriously. I and many others are trying to provide education for people on how not to harm us and how to deal with people that do. Now, will you stand with your queer students or against us?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Last thing is just a couple announcements. Tuesday, March 5th is our first budget meeting, our workshop. Tuesday, the 12th is at our next regular business meeting, followed up by Tuesday, March 12th, being our budget number two workshop. So March is always a busy month, but other than that, that's all the updates I have. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Carol, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.